There you go.
There you go.
I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Montague County Board of Education. It is Tuesday, June 24th, 5:00 p.m. It's our regular board meeting. All rise for the pledge, please.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks to everybody for coming. I know it's pretty snowy and icy out here. We want to do something on this meeting. Last meeting, we honored our retirees and we discovered we have no audio from that meeting. So what I want to do is read the names again. They won't be here, obviously, they were here last, but I want to make sure we get the names out there. So bear with me here. First one is Rhonda Baryard, teacher, special ed, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, years in Mon County, 33, total years is 35. David Caltrell, principal, retirement date, June 30th, 2024, years in Mon County, 23, total years 35. Darlaugh Dooley, teacher, early intervention, retirement date, June 30th, 2024, 35 years in Mon County, 35 years total. Anna Fleming, school counselor, August 6th, 2024, years in Mon County, 36, total years 38. Paula Goots Harris, teacher, kindergarten, retirement date was June 30th, 2025, years in Mon County, 20, total years 28. Angela Kirk, teacher, special ed, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, years in Mon County, three, total years 30. Next is Tamara Klimgowski, teacher, second grade, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, years in Mon County, 20, total years 20. Camilla Michael, teacher, special ed, retirement date, February 28th, 2025, years in Mon County, 24, total years 28. Rebecca Murdock, librarian, media specialist, retirement date, June 1st, 2024, years in Mon County, 22, total years 22. Elaine Riffle, teacher, music choir, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, years in Mon County, 22, total years 22. Next we have Debbie Robbins, science teacher, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, years in Mon County, 29, total years 30. Diane Shafano, teacher, second grade, August 16th, years in Mon County, 19, total years 24. Earl Schiffbauer, special, teacher, special ed, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, 32 years in Mon County, 32 years total. Joseph Smiddle, teacher, special ed, retirement date, January 31st, 2025, 25 years in Mon County, 25 years total. Deborah Rullery, teacher, special ed, retirement date, October 9th, 2024, years in Mon County, 18, total years 20. Joyce Arub, cook three, retirement date, August 14th, 2024, years in Mon County, 12, total years 12. Melanie Boyd, ECAT two, an aide, retirement date, October 15th, 24, years in Mon County, 23, total years 23. Deborah DeZuti, cook three, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, 26 years in Mon County, 26 years total. David Gerard, school bus operator, retirement date, November 1st, 2024, years in Mon County, 31, total years 31. Starr Hott, cafeteria manager, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, years in Mon County, 41, total years 41. Gregory McElroy, school bus operator, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, years in Mon County, 22, total years 22. Alan Morgan, custodian three, retirement date, June 30th, 2024, years in Mon County, 38, total years 38. Richard Saunders, chief mechanic, retirement date, June 30th, 2025, 46 years in Mon County, 46 years total. Tanya Solers, autism mentor, aide, retirement date, December 1st, 2024, 23 years in Mon County, 23 years total. William Solers, school bus operator, retirement date, December 1st, 2024, 34 years in Mon County, 34 years total. Sandra Twig, eight four, retirement date, August 1st, 2024, 25 years in Mon County, 25 years total. Daryl White, bus supervisor, March 6th, 2025, retirement date, 45 years in Mon County and 45 years total. So I wanted to make sure we recognized them again, and I want to thank Dominion Post for running the story because we had no audio, so at least we got it in print too, so I want to thank you guys for that. And that is all. Appreciate all those years, a lot of years there cumulate though, please. Okay, next we have delegations, and we have three people that want to speak, and I want to read this, the rules and regulations as they are. Speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect to the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications what you're about to say, we urge you to consult your legal advisor. Montague County Schools Board Policy 0169, public participation at board meetings state that you may speak no more than five minutes if there are 12 or fewer delegations. After 12 delegations, the amount of time you may speak will be determined by taking the number of delegations and dividing it by 60 minutes. Public comment is not a time for open dialogue among board members and the speaker. The board members will not answer any questions posed to them from a speaker or comment on a speaker's concerns. In short, there will be no verbal interaction from the board members during or after the speaker's comments, and that kind of falls under the sunshine law because we would wind up debating and we can't do that without having it on the agenda, so it's not that we don't want to talk to you, it's just we're not allowed to talk to you. So with that said, Kendra Beland, the line? Apologize before I said.
Hi, I'm Kendra Beland. I have two kids at Brookhaven and I'm the president of the Brookhaven Parent Group. I'm here tonight to discuss the recent decision to forbid us from using Boosterthon as a fundraising platform. So this decision has left us very confused and discouraged and frankly, at a loss about how to continue doing what works. For the past four years, our school has used Boosterthon to host one major fundraiser a year, the Fun Run. It's a nine-day event that combines character ed, fitness, school spirit. It consistently brings our school $30,000. This money sends our school on field trips. The Science Center, the Children's Museum, the aviary, theater performances, great things are happening with Fun Run money. Now, no one has given us a lot of information, but we've heard kind of through the grapevine that we're now supposed to use a platform called CheddarUp. But here's the problem, CheddarUp doesn't even compare to Boosterthon, not in what it offers or what it delivers. So let's start with numbers. We've earned $30,000 with Boosterthon every year. CheddarUp fundraisers raise on average about over $5,000. That's not speculation, that's from their website. And it's not just about money. Boosterthon offers a full staff to help parent groups. There's prizes and incentives that we don't have to purchase ourselves, and you'll like this part, there's automatic, safe, continuous, direct deposits to us as the event is going on. It's fast and it's safe. CheddarUp holds our funds in some third-party platform until a manual transfer is requested. And most importantly, character ed. Boosterthon teaches our kids about perseverance, dedication, trustworthiness, things our kids need to know. CheddarUp offers none of that. No staff, no support, no lessons, it's no fun, no guarantee of anywhere close to the same financial return. It's basically a payment collection site like a dressed-up PayPal. Now, switching would put a massive burden on our already overworked parent group. We're a small team, most of our meetings have four or five people. Reinventing a fundraiser like this takes money and people that we don't have. With CheddarUp, we'd be responsible for purchasing our own prizes, running our own promotion, tracking donations, hosting our own event, all for a fraction of the return. And because of that, as we go down that road, we're also going to end up having to do multiple fundraisers throughout the year to make up the difference if we still want to send our kids on these field trips. We'll be selling cookie dough and popcorn for a 25% profit instead of keeping the 75% profit that Boosterthon gives us. 75% is unheard of in the fundraising world. Or we'll be putting a QR code at every school event, asking for our families to give us money. That's not a good look for a Title I school. We don't want to do that. And for those of you that are worried, like me, about asking our community to do too much, we've had Boosterthon run the numbers. Over 50% of our donations come from outside of Montague County. These are not the people paying our school levy. They're families and grandparents and friends that want to support our students, so let's let them. Boosterthon allows us to reach beyond our local circle without putting more pressure on our families that already give so much. Now, before my step as a PTO mom, I was a teacher. I took lots of kids on field trips. I can't tell you how many times the kids were shocked that there was a river that ran through our town. That's how disconnected some of these kids are from their own surroundings. We're just trying to give them experiences and we're just trying to make it happen with a small team. That's what this is really all about. Now lastly, one more concern. Who made this decision? Because we're asked that over and over again, and we were told it was a board decision, but from what I now understand, board members weren't even asked about it? Now, if this is truly a board decision, I am asking for a public vote. Families deserve transparencies and clarity, and we deserve to know where these policies are coming from and how these decisions are being made. In closing, Boosterthon works. It provides value. It's fun. It requires less from our parent groups that are very small, and it doesn't constantly milk our families for money. We don't want to do that. Please don't take away something that works. Let us continue using Boosterthon. Thank you for hearing me, and I have a little paper that compares the two. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kendra. Next we have Rebecca Harana.
Hi there. I'm Becca Aranda, and honestly, I'd rather not be here on this hot summer day, but I am here because of the same issue that Kendra is here to address, because we have a problem that needs to be addressed. As she stated, a policy decision was made that's going to impact our kids, my kids, her kids, a lot of kids in this community. Our schoolchildren stand to lose tons of thousands of dollars in support of their enrichment and school experiences. I'm a parent of three Mountain View Elementary kids and a longtime PTO member. More importantly, to this conversation, I've been a longstanding member of the team that helps run our Fun Run using the same program, Boosterthon or my booster, has a variety of names, but all under the same parent company. And our school also raised around $30,000 this past year with our Fun Run. And we're not the only school in the county doing this. You've heard Brookhaven's story, this is Mountain View's story. We know that there are a total of six schools, six elementary schools in Mon County using this. That's far and away the majority of the schools, and we're using this as our primary fundraiser. Of course, there is a cost to it. We know that and we get that, but it also is a very reasonable cost. And I can tell you, my parents, my siblings, our friends are really happy to not be buying bags of popcorn or magazines or gift wrap or any of that. They're really happy that this money is going straight into our schools' pockets. Let's also be clear that our PTO, while small, is mighty, and we still could potentially put on a Fun Run without this company. However, it would not be the same. We do not have the capacity or capability among our all-volunteer crew to put something like this together. We don't have the tech skills to do it, and Booster provides a user-friendly and very efficient environment, not to mention safe and secure environment for us to be raising these funds. I won't touch on the geographical reach because Kendra did already talk about that, but let's just be clear that we are not nickel-and-diming our residents with this Fun Run. Finally, and most importantly to me, our Fun Run is indeed fun. My kids look forward to it every year, they get really excited. They get really excited to call their friends and family, share their links, make a video. The teachers get excited. This year, I was like in the Bobcat costume at our school during the Fun Run, and let me tell you, there was so much excitement, like I was almost terrified because I was in a weird costume, but the teachers had fun, the kids had fun, and like I said, friends and family are happy to donate. One final point I want to make is that our coalition, which is not just the three of us, there are many more parents that have been involved in this conversation but can't be here today, has called and emailed this administration repeatedly over the past few months about this issue. While we did receive responses from some board members, we have not been able to get in touch with the administration. By cutting off our ability to use Booster and other similar platforms, you're handicapping our ability to do what we do best, supporting our schools. We are here today to respectfully ask you to listen to us as parents and make a decision that will benefit our kids, our schools, and our community. At the very least, we deserve to not be ignored when we present a concern to you in good faith. Please see this handout for more details, and we are happy to participate in any more follow-up meetings necessary to settle this important issue.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, next we have Megan. I'm sorry, time trouble. I thought it was McCullough.
Sorry, just more recursive suggestions. Hello. I just wanted to say thank you for letting me speak. I was not prepared to speak. I was here in solidarity, so I'm just going to say a couple of things that I jotted down. I have two kids at Mountain View. One is getting ready to go to South. I've been on the PTO there since my son was in kindergarten, so I've been on the PTO for seven years. And this past two years, I was the secretary of the PTO. We are really struggling. We just don't have the help to do fundraisers, to raise money, to put on events. There are definitely fewer than 10 people that attend our PTO meetings. We were able to put on one more Fun Run this spring because we, they said we could do one more and we almost couldn't do it just because we didn't have the help on the backend at Mountain View. We had some teachers step up to help and I did it and another volunteer helped to run it. And if we lose the ability to do the Fun Run, I feel like there's even a chance that our PTO may not even exist in the future. We raised total, this one in the spring, $44,000. And since we make so much, we only do it every other year to, you know, not burden the families as much asking for money every year. So we do it every other year. And we ended up with, we got over $34,000 deposited into our account. If we can't do this anymore, it's going to go back to like spaghetti dinners, were mentioned, you know, just the typical things that you think of. And I think we maybe could raise $5,000 if we put those on. And I don't know that we could even put them on because I just don't think we have the help. So they do take a percentage, but it is worth it. They do all the tech. They give us, send us all the prizes. They are very responsive. I would have questions because I'd never done it before, they get right back to you. And I think the fee really, truly is reasonable. And it's, another good thing about it is all the kids participate. And we worked out with them that everyone got a, all the kids got a prize. So they all got like the keychain, even if they didn't participate, or even if they didn't raise any money or didn't register anything, we still gave them something. So they had something like to take home from it and they all get to participate in the Fun Run, which they really enjoy. We had a DJ and they had a really good time. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you Megan. I do want to mention that Sean Smith is with us by phone. So just because he's not here in person, he's here in spirit. He still with us Sean?
You spoke too soon.
Ah, he's there.
I'm watching online as well. It's very, very behind online. I gotta listen on my phone and try to watch online.
All right.
Good, I'm with you. I could hear, I could hear the lady just fine.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we add this particular issue to our July 8th agenda for discussion.
All right.
A second.
I don't know that we actually need a motion, but we'll put it on there. That's, yeah, that's a request.
So the agenda item will be to address that specific policy, the specific board of policy that addresses crowdsourcing.
All right. Next up, we have school performances, student outcomes, and academics from due curriculum audits. And our deputy superintendent Donna Talarico will be speaking. They wanted me to give you five minutes, but.
Mr. Kelly, I've been told that all day.
I was a victim of the harassment.
And we're under a power shutdown, the whole area is, so I was even told that that might, the lights might go out and the mic might go out, so.
That was last time.
That's true. Well, again, I am back for a round two of our curriculum audits and this time, the focus is on our secondary schools. So I am going to repeat, but very briefly, some of the information that you've already heard at the initial presentation for curriculum audits. Again, quickly, curriculum audits have been a staple for us the last few years. It's an opportunity to hear the voices of our teachers, not administrators, not other leadership positions, but frankly, teachers randomly volunteered or selected at all levels at all schools. And I was able to attend each and every audit and they were extremely productive. I do want to say that the very productive outcomes this year have been at the secondary schools. And that has been really heartening for me to see our secondary schools in such a thriving way. These were the questions that everyone had in advance. As you can see, they were three basic questions, but again, expanding on what we had done in year one. So again, we wanted to hear from our teachers, what they felt was working to make their students successful, and then what suggestions they had to improve that learning environment. And then finally, really, a question that is more thought-provoking and that is, what do we need to do to elevate our own profession? And this did not require a specific response, but yet something to ponder and something to bring back to their colleagues and for all of us to focus on. So again, those were the questions that. Okay. This is what the outcome was from last year. Again, very productive. We had our second annual Behavior Blueprint just this month. We did our eighth grade redemption program, which was an opportunity for eighth grade to master their skills before moving on to ninth grade. We worked very hard on a master school calendar. However, Mother Nature was not so cooperative with us this year, so that didn't work out as well. We did have a hugely successful implementation of our cellphone policy changes. I know this year, the governor has introduced and now is, it is a legislative requirement that we do follow a no-cellphone policy, but we already have that. We did it last year, very successfully within all of our schools. We did work on a training at the request of our teachers to help them understand what trauma is and how it should be addressed within the classroom. And finally, again, an ask from our educators was a program that both Amber and Teresa here put together. We call it the BOE Program, but it was basically the acronym for Booster Educators. And it has proven to be highly, highly successful. What it shows is the community support that we have in Montague County schools because so many vendors out there, when they were asked if they wanted to be a part of that, said yes, yes, and yes. And we saw that again at Behavior Blueprint by donations that were made to go forward for our teachers. So that was last year. This year then, we move on to either work on these and improving these. So we want to start with, again, what I started with before, and that is a snapshot really of our secondary schools. Gives you just a behind-the-scenes picture.
In Montague County Schools, our students experience a day that's aligned for excellence, where every moment is built to support their growth, success, and future. From the very first class, students dive into an academic journey tailored to their interests and goals. Whether they're exploring core subjects, challenging themselves with advanced placement, earning college credit, or gaining real-world skills at MTEC, students are empowered with choices. Hands-on learning, innovative instruction, and career-ready pathways ensure every learner finds their place. From flex time to large-group learning, all Montague County students get the tailored education they deserve. After the final bell, students extend their experience through a vibrant mix of athletics, theater, music, art, STEM clubs, and so much more. No matter their passion, there's a place to belong and grow. All of this is made possible through strong district, school, and classroom leadership and a caring support system, including counselors, nurses, outreach facilitators, and staff committed to every student's well-being. In Montague County, we are aligned for excellence.
Okay, that gives you a little snapshot of so many things that are happening within the schools. And again, it is a very brief snapshot of the wonderful things that happen at our schools. So with that, I wanted to take some time to look at what we saw, some of the common highlights and next steps for this year's curriculum audits. And I'm going to go through those quickly. I do understand there's a lot of educational wording through here. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of this. But again, these are the voices from our staff at the middle schools. Again, they felt very strongly about their positive school culture, their ability to align all the supports academically that they have, and how important it was to have that student engagement piece. Most of those schools are working through a behavior expectation program. This one that's most prevalent is called PBIS or Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. They also are very proud of the ability to personalize. This is something our middle and high schools have embraced this year, and that is the opportunity to provide intervention times within their schedule. And through the work with Sandy Devault and those principals, they have really been able to provide very specific intervention time within the master's schedule. The other big success this year was, this was our first year to have the four core content specialists. And teachers said in almost every audit how valuable that support was. The expertise that those individuals bring to their role and their ability to communicate that within the teachers was much appreciated. So with that, the following was something to reflect on and work for for next year. And that is, again, refining and refining those master schedules. Master scheduling is what drives your schools. If you don't have a good master schedule, you're not able to deliver the types of programming that our students need, or for that matter, to support our teachers in what they do. Looking again at what are the academics that really do enhance student success? So being very narrow, being very tight about the assessments we use, how do we interpret those? How do we have professional conversations with each other? And how do we truly focus on what success is going to look like for our students? Continuing to improve attendance, but I do want to add, and even though it's not part of this presentation, we're going to be featuring it here throughout the summer. We've had a tremendous, successful year with our attendance. Every single school, every school, and I have the data, we'll share that actually here, I think in July, has shown an improvement, a decrease in chronic absenteeism. And really, the ones that surprised me were our high schools that had the best performance. Morgantown High was one of the best performing schools in that improvement area. So all of our schools made headway in attendance and it, again, was very deliberate. Our attendance director used very specific mechanisms, mostly social media, but also visiting the schools, talking with students. And attendance absolutely showed that to be something that made a difference. And again, we're proud of those results. Again, the last piece was to continue to strengthen the communication with our families. And I think we even heard here this evening, it's very difficult to keep our families engaged. People are busy. It's difficult to keep communication going. We're looking at offering further trainings on Schoology, making sure parents can stay connected with our schools. So those are the big points. And again, in the high schools, again, these are the big, big pictures. Flex time, which is something that actually I had brought from a school in Pittsburgh and our high schools have embraced this and our middle schools have, it's, we call it flex time. And it's opportunity for our teachers to use skills and to get to build relationships with students that they don't normally have. It's not teaching a math class or a social studies class. It could be something as simple as teaching pickleball. It could be time to reinforce strategies. But students get to select the flex time that they want to attend and teachers get to build relationships with the students based on those connections. Again, a program that is used to enhance our math, it's called Alex. And as you can see, that's an acronym. Again, it's an intervention at our high schools, being very successful. And our teachers are very much appreciative of that. Some of the pieces that we have seen a need for and have begun to use is the freshman seminar, especially at Morgantown High, and what they call U-time, which is the after-school programming at University High. I didn't, I couldn't hear enough about it from our teachers and how well they appreciated it, as well as the students. The hands-on learning activities that go on at both MTEC and Excel, again, something that was lauded by the staff. The content specialists, again, those folks in the four core areas and the expertise that they brought to the teachers, again, very much appreciated and utilized. Working on the co-teaching and trying to strengthen that for, for our students. Again, if you have one person, it's good. If you have two, it's even better. So used well, it is amazing what you can achieve. Expanding, again, our student access to that intervention by building it in the master schedule. The issue of increasing our parent engagement, again, a challenge and some, something that we're constantly working on. Looking at what opportunities, again, this is going to be my focus here and what I'm calling High School 2030, because we really, truly need to take a look at what we do at grades 11 and 12. I'm not going to spend the time on it here this evening, but we've got to go beyond our borders. We have to open those doors. One example of that is that MedEd program that we are very successfully involved in. MTEC took that and was able to then reach out and get internships for almost all of their other areas because we did it first with MedEd. We really need to see this at grades 11 and 12. The standard classrooms that we have traditionally utilized, there is value, but after 10th grade, I think it's incumbent on us to look at what our students truly need at grades 11 and 12. I think the MedEd program is the core of how you do that. And I'd like to see us talk about that and expand that as we move forward with public education. And then finally, the ability, as I spelled it out there, it's internships, it's apprenticeships, it's the community leadership, it's other electives, and our teachers ask for that. And then the partnerships. So that's what it translates into. I think it's, again, important that we move forward. All right. Quickly, I'm going to hit the highlights and you can see them here, but these are our schools. The highlights that each school wanted to emphasize for themselves. At Mount near Middle, their PLCs and how valuable those were. The relationship. The relationships between the students and the teachers. And the presence of the administration supporting all of that. All of the teachers reiterated that to me. Next steps and asks for, as we transition from 5th grade to 6th grade, there's an entirely different grading system. And that can be challenging for students and for teachers. So more clarification on that, more education on that is something they asked for. Again, looking at modeling, how well the elementary do with interventions, and building that into the middle school schedule. That is something they aspire to do. And then again, making sure that they have a schedule that meets the needs of all students. Westwood, their highlights, they felt that they were expanding their PBIS, their student support program. And their school's culture was a benefactor of all of that. A lot of emphasis on math. A program, again, that we use with our three math specialists in this county. It's called More Math. And you can see, again, it's an acronym. But again, we lead the state with this. It was initially a grant. We actually separated ourselves from that grant because we could do it and continue to build it. And we have done that. And it's been very effective training for our math teachers. Again, the request to do as much of vertical teaming as possible. So in essence, that means 6th grade teachers meeting with 7th grade teachers, 7th grade teachers meeting with 8th grade teachers, 9th grade teachers and 8th grade teachers. That's something that they really think is important. Again, next steps here is looking at how 6th grade can address attendance issues and mixed work, providing more training in Schoology. And they ask for the opportunity to have a third nine-weeks parent-teacher conference. All of ours are in the fall. And they're seeing a need to meet with parents after that. South Middle, their schedule of built-in reading intervention, using the Eye Ready Assessment to guide which students need what support. They have a strong academic coach over there that really does a lot of analysis of student work and then provides the teachers with support through that. The after-school program that they have. And now, almost all of our middle schools have this after-school program, which is, again, funded by, in the past, we had extra money from either ESRF or other federal monies. That money does not exist. We had a 21st Century Grant. That is also not, no longer in existence. But the need for that and the value that is seen by our staff for that, and I think our parents, has added another dimension to our schools. Next steps, again, it's the grading practices, making sure that when we leave 5th grade, we come into 6th grade, there's an understanding of the different model of grading. Looking at using the Alex Math Program. And then making sure that our 6th graders understand the expectations when they do become a middle school student. I skipped over. Let's go back. South Crest Middle. They had big success with their communication goal this year. Really worked on that and made sure they were communicating with their parents and their data. And the reports that I read here at the end of the year showed great success with that. They were really unifying themselves with using the PBIS program, again, to strengthen the expectations and the recognition of students. They do feel that they offer a broad array of extracurricular opportunities. And that, again, makes students feel part of the school. They really want to expand and revise their schedule of instructional time to include co-teaching and also to build in intervention. So they're also looking at, how many times do we assess? And how do we use that assessment measure? The Excel Center, once again, this is an opportunity for students who need a second chance, either with academics and/or behavior. They felt they provided strong individualized support for students. They collaborated well with the outside agencies. And again, felt proud of their effective instruction and engagement. They have a very highly-committed staff. What do they want to do? They want to look at behavior management deeper than what they have to this point. They want to offer, we will provide them the training. They asked for training. This is particularly at the elementary part of that in Ufly. Ufly is the phonics program that we adopted this year and adopted it throughout the elementary program. But the elementary program at Excel had not been part of that. So they asked for that. And we're going to work on a new and improved system to assist with transition back to home schools. We have a great success rate with students who are attending Excel and then returning to their home school. And the data supports that. As a matter of fact, I had a conversation today. This is, I'm going to add this in. The gentleman that had come and had completed a walkthrough assessment, two of them, from the state, said that we had the best system in this state that he had seen as far as transitioning students. That's a credit to Adam Hinkins, Angela Hayes, and the team that works within the Student Services to track and make sure students receive the placement that is most appropriate for them. So it was gratifying to hear someone from the outside tell us that. Clay Patel, Middle and High. Again, they're very proud of their mental health support. We have a grant for that, again, that we had written. And it's been in place. This will be the third year for that. Again, it's really come together. And there are two mental health specialists that come and work at Clay Patel. And it has been very successful. They like the flex time because they feel it personalizes the extras for our students. And again, although I'm not sure cell phones is a big issue out there because connectivity isn't great. But they do appreciate the environment that the cellphone-free environment offers. They are working on improving scheduling, making sure that we are offering, to the extent possible, and responding to the needs that the students ask for. We offer TAG. That's the name for gifted students. Making sure we have that in the schedule. If band or instrumental music is requested, we have a period built in for that now for next year. So it is difficult in a small school to offer everything. But again, with a lot of work and effort, it will be included. Looking at co-teaching, again, is a way to help students be successful, ensuring that the students and the teachers have schedules that mesh and that we honor those schedules to the best of our ability. And finally, an opportunity to improve behavior for some students that are at the high school and middle school. MTEC, again, things that I know you already recognize. Lots of hands-on, real-world learning. The paid internships is a direct result of what we did with MedEd. And they reached out, and our companies were most happy to oblige. Teachers very invested in their students. They know the students. They're very invested in it. And they really do like the program completion. They're really working hard to make sure we have completers. So next steps for them is expand. This is something we're really excited about. In fact, we had five or six companies at the pre-bid meeting this week to do this expansion, which is the Middle School Discover Your Future and the Digital Innovation Center. That's the new build. So we are excited to see those bids come in. You'll hear more about that as that progresses and that new build gets underway here. But lots of energy around that. The request, again, to make sure that our high schools and our MTEC facility, that there's a lot of awareness among our teachers and our counselors of what is available. And then to make sure that the offerings that we have at MTEC are for college and career-bound students. University High. Tremendous unification of the staff there. I had the best conversations at these two big high schools. Our teachers really are invested in their students, not only their content, which they've always been, but really invested in student success. You could see that through how supportive they were of the after-school Utime program. They have had great success with the cellphone-free environment. They've talked about the focus that the students have and the ability for students to communicate with each other and with their teachers. So there is truly a high level of academic strategies being utilized. And there's a real commitment to their core curricular offerings. What they stated is they need to do more with their parent engagement. It becomes more and more difficult as the students become older and, again, trying to stay connected through Schoology, offering trainings, whatever it takes to try to bring that parent engagement back to the table. They do want us to continue to work on their student attendance. Even though they've shown success, we're still not where we want to be in the end. The other big issue for us, and it's part of this High School 2030, is they do have a program of early release. However, the teachers said to me that they really want to try to see what they can do. They want to keep their students. They want to have something that is available for students, whether it's expanded opportunities within the high school or, again, a version of MedEd, that we could do some combinations. So they have wonderful ideas, very thoughtful, and very interested in doing what's right for students. And Morgantown High. Again, you see a lot of the same things that came through these conversations. I attribute all of that to the fact that this is very much a team. This district is very connected through the schools, through the district individuals that work here, and the parents themselves who support our schools just tremendously. So again, at Morgantown High, utilizing their instructional time, utilizing flex. I think they have over 100 different flex opportunities for students. And this freshman seminar is something they're very committed to, ensuring that these students who make this transition to 9th grade feel supported and know the next steps for themselves as well as what they can do to enhance their future. Their tardy policy, they started that this year. It worked well. And again, they need to continue to work on it. They want to expand the freshman seminar, which was for a small group of students, to every 9th grader that comes through the doors, which we support totally. And then we're realigning credit recovery. Credit recovery cannot become a substitute for the core class. And so again, thanks to Sandy's leadership here and working with the schools, we're redefining what credit recovery is and how it should be used. So quickly, to wrap up here. This is the common next steps across our middle and high schools. Working on our tiered intervention framework, more in line with what we do at the elementary. Continue to work on our attendance and student engagement. Working with our families, making those transitions. Making sure that our grading policy is aligned. And looking at the master's schedule to maximize all the opportunities. This is it. Again, that's where we started. We know we're good. We want to always be great. We have pockets of greatness. Jim Collins said it best. You know, good to great does not start with just a big vision or just a new strategy. It begins with that relentless commitment in doing what we do well. And Montague County has that. The alignment with the Board of Education, the district office, the schools, and our family are what are key to this success. So thank you so much for hearing all of this and celebrating it. Thank you.
Communication. I think that's, I mean, that is spot on. I think a lot of it is, we tell them what we do. And I think it's good that we tell them why we do it. Because that's when you get the understanding. Because some, we see it a lot of times where people don't really understand a lot of things we can't do because of state law. So I think the communication with the parents of how that all fits together is great. Anybody else have?
Yep, I have two comments. I know I've only been on the board for 11 and 1/2 months now. But this is the first time I'm hearing about the High School 2030 initiative. I'd like to learn more about that. And maybe in July or August, you could do another presentation. I know we're all excited on that. Because I'd really like to know what the district is aiming towards. The other thing that I'd like to comment, which is kind of a soft spot for me, is this wording of real-world learning in MTEC or MedEd. It kind of diminishes the importance of things like foreign language and history, learning about literature across different countries along with STEM. Because that is real-world learning as well. And it shapes our students. It shapes how they understand the world around them. And so for us to say that hands-on learning or experiential learning equals real-world learning really diminishes the work of our teachers as well as the importance to our families and our students of those disciplines as well.
Thank you. And that was by no means the intent of that choice of words. We do those things so well. We have world language, as you know, at the elementary. We're the only district that does do that. We do have a strong emphasis on all of those. So I will choose a different wording to ensure that we cover those subjects here. Because it was in no way meant to diminish the other aspects of what we do. Thank you for that.
Sean, you have anything?
I liked everything we saw. It was a very, very good report. And like Dr. Morgan said, I'm excited to hear more about the initiative.
Thank you, Deputy Talarico. Okay, wording of contracts. Don't go to you.
All right. Jump right in. First is our workers' compensation carrier. Superintendent would like to recommend that we approve USI as our workers' compensation carrier, as you can see in your executive file.
Entertain a motion?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same, motion carries. Next one.
All right. Next is our Morgantown High School sewer upgrade. Award the contractor there. Had to actually put this out on RFP twice. And the second time, we, first time, we didn't get anybody bid on it. Second time, we got one bid. And that is for city construction. And Superintendent would like to recommend that the board approve city construction to finish that project or start that project for us. And their bid was $86,500.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
This is interesting.
This is going to be fun.
Yeah. Any comments or questions? Yes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. New contracts.
Yes, first is the Studies Weekly Agreement. You can see that in your executive content. Superintendent recommends that the board approve that agreement as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. I have a question. I have a question about this contract. It is a five-year contract. Is this, since it's a new contract, is this the newspaper thing? Why a five-year contract rather than trying it out for a year? Is it because of how we adopted our curriculum?
Yes, yes, that's exactly how it is. And so it is year to year, but it is under that umbrella of all the adoptions. Okay, great.
And I think that's an important point to reiterate. We're not permitted to enter into any contracts more than one year. We can have a five-year agreement that we have to renew on an annual basis.
Okay, because in the contract it says we agreed to a five-year subscription.
And they're all worded that way. But they realize that we, they sign an addendum for any contract or agreement that we put out that stipulates that at any point in that five-year period of time, if we're not satisfied, we can opt out.
Excellent, thank you.
That's a good segue into what I was talking about, why we do what we do. So that was great, I'm going to address that question. Any other comments, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Next one.
This is the affiliation agreement between the West Virginia Department of Health Facilities and MTEC. You can see the agreement in your executive file. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the agreement as presented to you this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any conversation, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries. No education services.
Yeah, this is for Skyview. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the no education services agreement as presented. You did receive that a little bit later today. We had some changes that needed to be made on their end, and they were able to get that back to us in time to have it on the agenda this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries. This next item, I must recuse myself because I have a business relationship with this firm, so I would ask our Vice President Hagerty to cover.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve Accounts Payable Addendum A as presented to you this evening.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Say opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Hagerty. Next, we have consent agenda. Superintendent?
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented to include Items A expenditures exceeding $3,000, Item B supplements and transfers, Item C is the payment of salaries and accounts payable, Item D are the minutes of your June 10th, 2025 meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Do we have an excess, anything on the excess levy update?
No, I just want to re-encourage our board members soliciting names for the committee. I know that Teresa did send out the names of the old committee members, not old in that way.
Former.
Former committee members for the excess levy. And, you know, we are looking for recommendations for chair, a chair of the excess levy committee or co-chairs, as we've done successfully in the past. You know, it certainly helps, as we've talked internally, you know, prominent community members, parents who have children in the school system who will be invested in the levy for the next four or five years would be very beneficial. But, you know, as you think of names or suggestions, please make sure you reach out to Teresa and let her know who those are. We can make some contacts, but we do not want to let this thing go too long without getting the committee together. So we do need your help, board members, to put that committee together sooner rather than later. I do know we are planning, I think, for the August, one of the August meetings, we're probably going to try to bring in legal representation to do a session for the board members as far as the legalities of campaigning for the excess levy, so that, you know, we're not making any mistakes from that avenue. And it'll give board members an opportunity to ask questions as well. We've got a couple of good folks that we've worked with in the past that, you know, know excess, school excess levies inside and out, so tapping into their expertise, I think, will be very important for you as well, board members. So we're planning that, I think, for August, but over the course of the summer, we would love to be able to formulate that committee so that as we get back into the flow of the new school year, we can hit the ground running with that. Believe me, May is going to be here faster than you can imagine.
Every time we do these levies, it sneaks up.
It'll sneak up on us, and we don't want that to happen, so. Unless you have any questions, that's all I had for you.
Questions? Okay, next item is our Board of Education meeting schedule, which I should have had a call for.
I believe we did provide you with a copy of the proposed schedule. We did include that as an action item. Typically, this board approves their schedule prior to July 1st, which is the start of the new term, and we will seek that action this evening. After you have a chance to look at that, I'll go ahead and make a recommendation that the board approve the '25-'26 board meeting schedule as presented to you this evening. And please do remember, we can make changes as we go through the year for a variety of reasons, but we would like to have that approved so that we can post that to the public.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I will say that, as in the past, we've tried to stay on our Tuesday. You know, we could do it any day, but some of them we've had to move, but I like the fact that we have, all these years, we've always known that Tuesday is where we're going to be doing.
Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, our board policy states second and fourth Tuesday. Yeah, it's in policy, yes.
Which, good changes.
It's also included in the policy. It gives you the opportunity to change for a variety of reasons, as we do when we get to holidays and things like that. We can always move things around.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is board updates. Anybody have?
I would just like to ask that somebody reach out to the parents before that meeting, and we've been talking a lot about communication with our parents and helping them understand the why, and then to hear that they haven't gotten a call back, I would like to.
There's a good voice.
I'd like them to get a call back before our meeting. I know I asked a couple of questions about the same thing, and I didn't get a response either, so I would like to at least have the parents be addressed before that so that they're not stressed and worried and wondering.
Maybe our media could help with that. Anything else?
I just want to say we did a really great job with the cool bus that ran over the past few weeks. Getting excited, I know, the day before our next official regularly scheduled meeting, we're going to be starting Summer Avalanche, and it's just such a great time for programming, so I'm really excited to see what our teachers and our staff have in store.
You have anything, Sean?
There's been a lot of communication with the public lately, a lot of parents, a lot of parents concerned about specific things, and I hope the public knows that we work our hardest to do what's right, so that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is policy review.
We do have another update that, I'm just double-checking that I have all the comments back from our administration, and then I will get those to you for review, and then we will get them on for first reading coming up here soon.
So it'll be in the July, they won't be at the end of the Friday or the end of the
Oh, no, it won't be that soon.
That's a lunch meeting, so we don't want to try to do that one. Okay, personnel.
I don't have any changes to your regular personnel list. With that, superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries. I guess we have no new positions.
No, but before I do that, I do want to make a special recognition, as we talked about retirees this evening, and I want to make sure I get it right, but the board members, with your acceptance of the personnel list this evening, you're accepting the retirement of longtime employee Joy Lynch, who has served as school counselor at Suncrest Middle School. She has decided to retire, and Ms. Lynch has served as a counselor for the last 54 years, and so her service has been much appreciated, and I thank you. We wish her the best of luck in her retirement.
That pretty well spells it out, 54 years. Sounds like Barbara McLean. Okay, so next is the addendum.
You're right, we do have no new positions.
Right.
We can move to the addendum. I don't have any changes to the addendum. With that, superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel addendum as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a second? We got a second, okay. Discussion, all in favor? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Our next board meeting is June 30th at noon, so it'll just be a quick meeting there, so.
Yeah, board members, the only thing on that agenda is close of business items from the business department and any personnel items that we need to get taken care of prior to July 1st, so really, it should last no longer than 15 minutes.
That's because Jennifer won't have any policies or.
Mike would like to call.
Anything else? We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.